Praise God, Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day and we thank you for just watching over us, Lord, and being with us. We just thank you, Lord, for all the things that you have done for us. We ask for your guidance and knowledge today as we do to conduct the business of the county. We ask to be with our first responders, watch over them, and we thank you for it. I will just be with us and help us, is our prayer in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Praise. I would like to use the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and every and every for all.
So publicly we will be the one, we always have had in these games, if you have to ask them all, it's not a problem. It's a report speaker view, that is why there's so large.
All right.
So like the people are saying finally.
All the meetings are ordered, all commissioners are here, Lauren.
That we can.
And our new administrator Candace is over there, and if you haven't met her, that's Candace Lancaster, she's going to be our new administrator, so good luck.
Thank you.
This is her second day, so I hope you don't want to leave after today.
Yes, we do.
Okay, uh, Lauren, you got anything for the agenda?
Um, correspondence, the development authority regarding their membership, and then the sheriff wanted to discuss some issues, manpower, budget generator, and executive sessions.
Okay.
And an appointment at 10 o'clock, Mr. Marker.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, I mean, I'm sorry. So move, I'll second. Have you guys had a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
On the 28th?
Yes.
Yep, I meant to let you approve the January 14th, 2025, and the October 28th, 2025 minutes.
I can add in, I'll approve it also. Okay, we'll move on, public comments, anybody got any comments?
Anybody sign up for comments?
You say what?
Anybody sign up for comments? Nobody has, I saw one.
Yeah, okay, we'll move along, correspondence, the assessors office. Then we get down to the. Nothing. Lauren, what's 90 cents for coyote management?
They give that for coyote damage.
90 cents?
Nine dollars?
Huh?
Nine dollars?
No, it's 90 cents.
Oh, you're down here, that's 10% of it, so nine dollars was collected on top, 10% goes 90. She gets to keep 10%, and at the end of the year, she gets that percentage.
Okay, dog wardens, uh, picked up 10 dogs, tried cats, had 117 complaints. They sold and gave away all the animals that they picked up, but that was good. So. Reason fail bill. It hit us hard this month, it's $48,899.80. So.
Forty seven.
Eighty cents.
This is important, link bill.
Forty seven. Forty seven thousand eight hundred and ninety nine dollars and eighty cents. Yeah. That's something I talked to Rick Philbin about trying to get the municipality or whoever to pay for their own. The rest in agency are to pay their own bills. So, Lauren. Well, okay.
Ninety years of NACO.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if there's anything in your code, I'm up down.
There's a little letter.
Too much.
But yeah, if somebody wants to include the booklet, I don't think you probably can keep it, and then I can keep it, the correspondent.
We've got stuff, we've got them. Yeah, she just has the booklet, so if anybody wants to look at it.
I can just put there, we miss us.
You know, county, well, so we have your board members, Shelley Friend.
There was some confusion at the last meeting, so her dates weren't matching my dates. That's because she didn't know there was a three-year term, so she was just doing it every other year she was appointed.
Okay.
So going back to where she flipped on the two-year terms, this three-year terms, it does match my list. So with that, there were only two individuals that needed to be appointed, that was John Lusk and Randy Leisure.
Yeah. So they're asking to be reappointed, right?
Yes, sir.
Bill's like, Shelby.
Do they have to send in a note that we?
They said that these individuals expressed the willingness to continue, um, uh, Mr. Lusk is the vice president, and I believe Mr. Leisure's pretty involved too, isn't he?
He comes out of meetings.
Yes. So he expressed the willingness to continue, sir. If you want letters from them for where you're going, that's, I can request that. Are you? Um, Mr. Leisure represents Ridgely.
Carpenter now.
Carpenter, yeah.
That Ridgely, that's kind of.
It was Springs, Ridge, but rings. Wings, Ridge, don't worry.
Probably.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go into the.
Yeah, change would be Ridgely.
Old business, lack of motion to point these gentlemen to the. So, Morgan, I think the motion. For, on that, Randy Leisure, yes, also gonna approve that also. Update on courthouse improvement.
They are still punching, we're hoping to get probation moved in soon, however, there were sprinkler lines installed that shouldn't have been installed in places they were, like under ceilings. Sprinkler company has agreed to relocate them, but we certainly can't move probation in until those lines are moved, because they're gonna have to tear a bunch of ceiling tiles, drain sprinkler lines down, and um, it's gonna be some effort for them to move those lines. They are, they have already agreed to do it, hoping they do in the next week or two here, because they might get paid as well. Uh, they're, they're working through the punch list. For the most part, I mean, all the major stuff's done, the new doors came in everywhere. Uh, Advantage has been down there working on access control cameras, I think they're nearing completion on those items at this point, let's just hope the House votes on a CR tonight and we can reopen the government, so that maybe we can get our closing scheduled sometime in December. Uh, I would not have a whole lot of faith in getting it scheduled in December, but let's keep our fingers crossed and send up a prayer that we can, so. We shall see if we can get all those people's schedules in line to finish that closing, and then we'll also have, we guys already approved payout 30, but I'm sure 31 will be ready very soon. But we can't pay any pay applications until the pedals are made and spec up, because USDA has to sign off on them. So there's that, Krista does have something.
Yeah, but speaking of the pipes, I do have a leak again, right above my desk, and of course the windows, I gotta replace those, because they don't have a hose in them to speak through, so they have to replace those, those were temporary.
Oh, yes.
And the door going into our break room that's from the lunchroom, I was wondering about getting a key fob for that instead of using a key, because if we leave it open, then someone can go in our break room where there's gonna be knives and stuff that we're gonna have stored and can come right into the office, and it'd be quicker to use a key fob than it is going with a key trying to get the door open like if something would happen in the courtroom, and you're wanting to hurry up and get in your office, you gotta go with a key to unlock the door, and then you're gonna have to lock it up again when you're on the other side. So that was just something that I wanted to ask about, if there was a way to get the fob to work on our break room door.
Well, based up to you, I mean, it's gonna, I can tell you the door's cost between, it's between one to $2,000 if you follow. So that was all she needed to come ask, though. She, so she's got a fob into the main portion of her office, because this is the door, yeah, starting from the courtroom that will go into her new break room, it's just got a physical key. Um, so that's what I told her she need to come ask you all, because we had, we had downsized some fobs up in other places.
I see your concern, I see.
Yeah, because it's quicker before, because before we were on the other side, the end of vault door, and you could get in the door and you could just turn the knob and it locks, now you're going with a key if something goes wrong. Hopefully nothing ever does, but, and two, if it's a break room right there beside, right beside the courtroom, so that was my issue.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Okay, so am I able to leave and you all want to discuss it, or are you used to?
Well, we don't need to. What do you, what's your guess, Lauren?
I was saying, I'm, I'm, it's gonna be between one and $2,000, that's what Frank's gonna tell me when I call him, so.
What do you think? Jason Duxton.
Advantage is joining other access controller counties.
I think, you know, I think, I could feel all right.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with.
And then again, that's coming out of the general.
Yeah.
Right. Uh, yeah. I mean, security is a concern, I'm sure the sheriff's department would also agree.
You got any, you got any money concealed?
I got tons of, you know.
You don't, could you come up with 2,000 if concealed?
And hopefully it'd be less than two, but I, I don't know, that's just, that's the same estimate, I've done a lot of the worst in the last four years.
Yeah, so I, just, just go ahead and get it, and go and see what's coming. Yeah. Uh, I'll, if it's less than two, you only just go and do it?
Yeah.
While they're here, I make, I make a motion that we get door locked, put on the courtroom door into the break rooms for this, unless, uh, or less than 2,000, it's about 2,000, I guess, come back to us.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that, yeah.
True, good ones.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Now, that, that was.
Okay, one thing, I don't, I don't know if it's been pointed out to our sheriff, no, but down there where you have the storage room where you go into the outside there off of the parking lot, almost out to the street, that downspout, I'm telling you, it's not good. Ask Roger real, we was down there, it's, it's pretty wild, they never fasten the handle. It's not fastening at all. So, that needs, I think our guys can do that, but it needs to be fast.
Just one thing, on the loan, did you find out anything on the bank, you're having very deals?
So if you could do that, you, you know what, you know where I'm referring to? Did you see it down there on the ball, have you?
I never noticed it.
Oh, it's pretty, pretty, pretty shaky.
And it's there spalling, like guys, and fair chance to spaw it.
Well, I don't know who put it up, they had to put it up.
Okay.
Downspout. That big square one? Big, big square two. Okay, do you guys have anything else at all? Health department update, it's, it's looking good, I don't, have any of you been out to the health department looking good?
Some parents.
It's looking real good.
Uh, bigger, I thought it was gonna be bent by.
It's bigger when you look at it, when you go in and look at it out from the road. Come along good, everything looks good.
I think she, I'm gonna, I don't get it.
I want to do a different. I stayed on over, Lori.
All right, so the Hambrich authorities is requesting the 24,000 of their, 24,000 for the buy down of Dr. Turbos, and there was email reporting of some of the training that she's done in that time, I'll make a motion, we approve the $24,000, are they really money for that buy down?
I'm second. Get motion passed, okay.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Um, also received a report from Stagger's house, I thought I had an email requesting their other $10,000. Uh, couldn't find it, do you recall?
From them?
Yeah. Okay, um, my, I messed up my spreadsheet, can you give me a ledger of all the, everything that's been walking down here? So I ended up taking my stuff, but I don't know.
From beginning?
Yeah.
From beginning, yeah.
I can get my spreadsheet updated and get it straight to you. So, um, and that's up now, and now I'm done.
Well, are, do you approve another payment to them?
Well, I feel like I said, I thought I had a request, but now I can't find it, so I better head for it. Looking for that to someone to report on today.
We want to chase those.
If we get printed reports for September, or Lauren sends the report to Eileen and asks it to be distributed. The one we had for September had that implemented, and so had printed, she should have given you enough over.
I'll email those to you all.
Should we do September?
I think we can redo it if you'd like and resend it, that's no problem, I can do that later today, but.
That was just a theory of right.
Do you have it on you, like, or you could just read it out and come up with a report?
Yep, give me a second, I'll pull it up in a second.
And if I request it, it's still on me, so I, because I'm not gonna get everything you're giving up.
Yeah, it should, I know she asked for it to be distributed to the masses, so I'm uncertain if that was what occurred, but.
People can give the, um, a financial report.
Yeah.
If you, if you got, yeah, I was, that's what I was looking for, if you want nothing else on.
Okay, there's two things here, I'm gonna talk about this, and then I, I, I have a personnel discussion that we have to have. Probably, 47.
Uh, also have the.
You want to come up here? You want to come up here to you and find us later?
Sure, in the meantime, I can give you the over report as well.
This was hard to break down, because they had to deal with it, this comes right from our county offices, okay? So, um, the grand scheme of things is, um, you're gonna see a large number for expend total expenses, but can we take out the money that we knew was startup? And that we weren't getting money for this equipment?
So, so what Paulie's implying is that on here is every single purchase, like, including the cardiac monitor. So there's over 70, I think it's like $73,000, that's just the cardiac monitor and the ventilator on here. They put the blood equipment on here, which is $15,000, which was refunded by Potomac Valley Hospital, so that one there. So right there is over $90,000 on this spreadsheet that looks like we spent, but we didn't, right? Um, so the highlighted portion is on here, so anything that is highlighted in pink is an annual renewal of different, um, lengths, so the personnel certificate, that's not Lauren's personal certificate, that is the Office of EMS licensure, and that is every four years, so that charge will not occur again for four years. The CLEO lab is every year, and then the other pink one that's highlighted is the oil change and maintenance, which is every 3,000 miles, so whatever that comes out to be, um, every few months, that will, will go. Um, orange on this printout looks like yellow, but orange is bound to three, there's only three of them, and that's our supply ordering. We don't order monthly, we only order as needed, so if we use up all of our IV kits, we'll reorder them affordingly. So that number will not always be the same, it might be only 50 bucks, it might be $200, it depends on what is actually ordered and what we utilize during the month on of equipment. And then the yellow lines are monthly recurring costs, that would be our oxygen bottles, which come monthly, the rental delivery and hazmat insurance that goes along with the oxygen, as well as the cell phone bill. Um, anything in red that I circled is payable, which was about $19,000.
Yeah, you're missing one pay grade from a full, from a full quarter.
And then the blue outline was the blood equipment, which was all fully reimbursed. Anything that does not have a color or an outline around it was a startup cost that is not going to recur monthly at all. That included our cardiac equipment, like I talked about, our monitor, our ventilator, our IV pump. The blood product stuff was reimbursed, it also included the office supplies, because we weren't awarded any, you know, new supplies, we had to go and purchase all of that ourselves, computer, pens, styling, storage equipment, et cetera, baskets to house all of our, um, medical supplies and all of that stuff. Um, we have a television on the wall now, which is for training purposes, we tried to repurpose an old television from the old courthouse, it, it was not functioning.
We carried it up there.
He even told me how to get it.
Well, we.
We, well.
We wouldn't have liked.
Well, we didn't like the one that we carried up there either.
And then any desks, equipment and things like that, we didn't have anything to purchase, so we took them out of the trash that was thrown out. So we refurbished a lot of stuff, um, on our own time, and I mean, between myself, Lauren, and Greg, we'd probably put $1,000 of our own money into this as well, so the monthly recurrings and the orange lines, if you add those totals up, it's $4,410, I believe. I really count somewhere, but, so that's really all we actually spent, that was.
It's not gonna be, the supplies aren't gonna be like that tank closer, for these, there'll be one, we may not find them again.
Right, that's what I was saying, that, that boundary, the orange lines are, are different depending on what.
One thing you do see on the report is reimbursement, you show can't be a fee, uh, the duty, I used my fire company credit card to fund all the purchases for this deal, they got a P-card up running, and we had no way to, everybody needed a credit card to go and buy things, I talked to our board, and I said, you know, it's, it's never a problem, we, we, we don't, uh, you know, because the money comes to reimburse us before the deal comes, so we don't, we don't incur an interest charge, but there's P-cards out, now they all have them, I believe, right?
Uh, almost all.
All, almost all.
But Jordan would only use a P-card for the deal anyway, so it wouldn't.
But Craig and, Craig and Lauren have, have theirs, so there's no, uh, that, that's going to go away, and it's going to be the P-card purchase reimbursement to the, to the county, or however, however it goes.
What is your total to date, since the, which year?
Um, well, I mean, if.
The P-part? No, for the, everything.
I, it's hard, that's.
So this total, including all the startup costs?
Yeah.
Uh, you'd have to calculate all the end values on each page?
Yeah, here.
It didn't.
It, it, she, she didn't do it because each page was a different, uh, you, you can have a copy of it, it's, it's, that's the next, when it stopped with that, I made multiple. So, everything we've done is right here, and I actually have, um, a copy of, if I can find them, it happens, actually, but the reimbursements, um, for the ALS boarding, the, the departments since the 1st of August, uh, is $3,350 back from the, from the ambulance squads from, from Response One boarding and transporting patients, so there's 3,350 have come back.
And after startup, we spent $4,410, so that's, that's
Yeah.
pretty good to get 3,000 something back.
Yeah, so it's, um, you know, and you look at the payroll, you were one, you were one pay grade short, but, uh, it had $19,000 on pay grade, you can then have about $24,000. A quarter, um, a quarter of time with previous setup, you're looking at, uh, about $11,500 at the time out there, they just had the pay raises, so I'm assuming they put it, they can't, they, there's a big operator loss, so you're looking at, um, about a $9,000 savings in payroll, uh, split quarters. So, that, I think works out math-wise, and, and, and I think the other costs to you are gonna be there. But you, like, you look, Lauren, when you look at it and you see the $15,000 for the, for the blood product equipment, uh, Centerville Hospital's cutting a check for that $15,000 back, so that's, that's an envoy.
$3,000 and change.
And I'm putting a check in today for $1,000 from Grant County Bank, where they donated $1,000 back toward the purchase of the, um, ultrasound, the Krista.
And then, um, actually, the moose, Craig just called me this morning, and the moose has donated a $300 check toward the ultrasound as well. They asked us to come pick that up, I thought that was very gracious of them. Um, and there is another thing in town that sent an email to us as well for that spice, so very kind of the community.
We're trying to fund it.
And do those.
We're trying to fund it, is, find as much funding as best funding is, so. Um, because on top of that, I have the other, other expenses, now the, the only paying for 50% of the maintenance is great, but in the last month, Shortcaps spent, we, we've had 8,000 ish, $9,000 in maintenance to our two ambulants, so Shortcaps been on the hook for 4,000 to 4,500 of that. Uh, we, uh, dropped a turbo and it, uh, it blew a line, um, and Greg, Corey, did business.
But my, my whole point in this is that all these non highlighted or outlined expenses are, are done. There's no, they're not recurring, that's, they're, they're finished, that was setting up the office, getting the bags for the equipment, for those kinds of things that we had to have, and for startup that we had talked about when we had come, you know, when we had done the, the, uh, committee, et cetera, and the cardiac monitor. So really, we're spending, we spent about 4,500, a little less than $4,500 of other medical supplies and stuff to fill the car with the 3,300 dollar kickback already on a vehicle.
I do have a question.
Yes.
August 29th, around 28 other sales, is that just for a little change?
Yes, and, uh, he evaluated, I think, the tires for rotation at that point.
Yeah, it was, I think you need to find some place else to get a little change, because that's ridiculous.
Yes, I know.
I don't know if we already did anything else.
No, but I, but I, what do you do, after you get it done, it's, it's done, so.
Yeah, play sales.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Roger, I'm quick.
The only thing, I think the only thing, maybe you did it on a Saturday, so they charged a time and a half rate for it, but I, we can, we can work around that too, you know, I, I, I don't want it to go out of service, but if it's out of service, it, 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 the last time we had service done to it, we did the same thing that we've done in the past, where, uh, Shortcaps' response was used by, uh, the paramedic, well, Lauren, she was, she, she would take the service, so Shortcaps' response, she hopped in it while Response One was getting service, and we didn't lose them in the time.
No, and Fort Ashby also offered their utility.
Yeah.
You still have the other chase part, too.
We do, but there are some things that need done before we can use it, it has to be licensed.
So I can speak on that, so it is currently licensed by the Office of EMS, but not licensed with all the equipment, because you cannot store a vehicle and call it a fully stored vehicle if it doesn't have the equipment on it always. So without a second cardiac monitor, I can't have it listed as an in-service vehicle if it's just sitting without any equipment. So we, we can do that, but we have to put the supplies on it, all, at all, correct, yeah. So there's, it's a, it's a special license, now, the hope is to be able to do that, right? And you can utilize it in an emergency, if you request it for a short period of time, I'd have to ask exactly, there is, none of it's 10 days of two weeks, but if there was an emergency where our vehicle needed something long-term to repair, or it would take a week to do, we call the Office of EMS, and then they give us like a, a special thing to transfer everything for, um, which is fine, but it can't be an extended period of, I assume, had it.
And we never, it's funny, it's not there, so, and, and things like that, but if that's a thing in the future, you know, that'd be still there, and that's, you know, in the future, that, that's a good resource to have.
You almost need a backup.
Yeah.
Yes, but luckily we have several local volunteer agencies who have vehicles that if we did need to have an oil change on a Monday morning or something, we would have just utilized that in its place, so we wouldn't.
I'm pretty sure they're, actually, all have, 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 they're responsible, they're, and they're, they're fully staffed, fully, or fully equipped, they're fully equipped, ALS laws, just like this, minus a couple of things, but the, the basis for life saving is there.
Um, just for the, the car update, so we had 84 total involvements for Response One across Monroe County, we had some cases canceled, of course, we threw three, uh, three patients were flown from scene to, one was a pediatric medical emergency, one was a cardiac arrest that we got pulses back, and one was an adult trauma. We have our new zeventilator, which was utilized in the field for a post cardiac arrest patient, which was fantastic. Um, we made it recruit four times for a BLS or ALS call, we were first on scene 23 times. Um, at the time of this report, I had spent 16 hours on the car, which I ended up doing more than that. Our, we did have an oil change on 10/29, I'm uncertain if that was, was, that was.
And that was all.
No, that was August, I don't know what the price of that was at that time, so, uh, fuel usage, so people are saying we're using more fuel, that is correct. The car is astronomically larger, and the tank is much larger, and per request of when we created this, we've been asked to show more presence in all areas of the county. So we've been up in Burlington more, we've been over in, in Wiley Ford and Ridgely, so when you're going proxy, you're gonna use more fuel, it's unavoidable, right? If we, if people want us to be all over the county, that's great, we will do that, but if we're going from the 911 center all the way to Ridgely every day, or every other day, or we're going, you know, from Fort Ashby all the way up, up to hang out in Burlington, that, we're gonna use more fuel, but also the car is much, much bigger. Um, I don't know, being them side by side, but it's kind of, it's kind of funny.
Kind of the age compared to the other car, the C6, so.
So yes, we have, we have used more fuel, um, other than one employee, uh, we have all of our people now P-card trained and receiving the P-cards for fuel, and then Lauren and Craig have P-cards for purchases of our medical equipment. For fuel and then Lauren and Craig have P cards for purchases and medical equipment. The per diem place do not have purchases for medical equipment just for fuel.
So the fuel cost should go down if they use the P card because these big tax.
Um, we have another upcoming meeting in December with Potomac Valley regarding rollout of prehospital blood, um. Tentatively, we wanted to do it January first. I don't know if that's realistic, not because we don't, I'm not ready. We have all of our equipment ready, but we have to wait on the blood bank. That's the holdup right now. Um, so once the blood bank is, says yes. My thought to do this correctly is to not just say, okay, good, start on January one, but instead to do appropriate training. Make sure that we know how to transition the blood from the blood bank to us and vice versa, so that we're not wasting. Make sure everybody knows how to use. The temperature stick appropriately because we're not going to waste, um, blood product. Everybody knows how much donating blood, how important that is, so we're not going to lose it. Um, so once they get that, he'll do our training. If we start January one, great. If we have to push it back a little bit, then so be it. Um. We have multiple training events this quarter. We just did one at New Creek, um, for specifically for our EMT BLS providers. On the twenty second and twenty third, we have. Three classes that are occurring over the course of the weekend for free. Um, those classes, we just had someone take and they paid over two hundred dollars out of their own pocket for. And we're offering them for free, um, so that's pretty great. And then we have another one, December thirteenth for that EMT BLS providers class. So that's for the quarter. There's four options this quarter. Um, for classes and then we do, we did start our Facebook page. We've been posting a lot of things we've been doing. Uh, in the last month, we've been at. I mean, numerous events. We were at the Kaiser Lions and gave a presentation. We went to Fort Ashby Street Street. We. Did the Veterans Parade, the Welcome Home Parade for the cross country team at Frankfurt. We've done standby coverage at the football. Games for Frankfurt and Kaiser. Um, we did a layperson Nartan Training at Kaiser, the Mountain Road Mile Walk. I don't know if that that may have been. And Hocktown Heroes in Laval, who asked us to come and and across county, do a collaboration with them, and we did that as well.
The most interesting training that that I've been to in the last probably year. Was in September, uh, she had the director of, uh, the Children's Hospital's Emergency Department, uh, down to. To teach pediatric emergencies and pediatric patient care, which. Is great because we don't see a lot of pediatric patients and when you do see them, they're usually really, really, really sick and it's not something, you know, I can. As an E as an EMS provider, EMTV, I can deal with the forty to fifty year old adult. That's got the same type health problems that the last twenty five that I've seen, but. Uh, a four year old with a severe medical emergency, I might see that once every three years. So, you know, so this this doctor, I forget her name.
She really helps.
She she's the director of the Emergency Department for the Children's Hospital of WVU and she came down. In Burlington and I was fully trained, uh, for the fall, uh, at Burlington. They they came down, did a presentation, pediatrics.
And then.
That was for.
And then lastly, we have students on the vehicle. We have paramedic students and yesterday we had our first EMT student. Uh, historically, EMT students have never been on the chase car before, but like we talked about, we want to be able to put out. True teams and crews for the county, right? So you can teach all the paramedics you want, but we don't work alone. We're a team, right? So we're incorporating our EMT students as well. And it was really great to watch our paramedic student. Teaching the EMT student and and kind of going from there and working together. So that was cool. So that happened yesterday and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I need a minute. Yeah, we have this.
Thank you for your. And they want to go into exam session, so it'll be less than.
And I'll second that also, and there was no action taken. We just discussed a few things that needed to be discussed, so. Okay, let's move on, uh. Oh, yeah. We're at the discussion for each versus levy for Amber's thirty. Mike, Mike, what's his last name?
Rosenold.
Ross, Rosenold, whatever. Uh, I've talked to him a couple of times and he wants to come and sit down with us, maybe have a work session. About these fees that they're charging where we can help our EMS services. So we need to set.
Mike, yeah, Mike's the president of the Tucker County.
County Commission, yeah. And, uh, we need to sit down with him and have a meeting with them.
Yeah, I I did just see Jefferson County, they just put a press release out on their fee collections. They have specific fees tied to different levels of development, but they use it to help fund their EMS as well. It's just when you're. Building and taught for lengthy, it's a. Man, it's a use fee. Yeah, something like that.
They would be somebody's luck and how they did it, if they just went to full scale, like. County EMS, they had to generate funds. That's not what I'm saying we need to do, but we do need to generate funding and then how they did it, they they went from getting their fire station with just personnel to. They strip all the ambulance down with fire stations, do a bunch of stuff. We don't need that kind of money, but but how they did it and the direction they use will be another option to look at how those fees work.
What Tucker County come up with, I'm never going to get into.
Right.
What all they did, but they didn't put an extra burden upon the taxpayer and I'm one hundred percent of the county. I'm I'm not favor putting burdens on the taxpayers.
No, I I like the fact that if you can do a fee. That doesn't burden the taxpayers, so you can still keep them taxpayers supporting the levy, so the taxpayers have, um. Uh, buying into their own. Emergency medical service thing. I think I think that's an appropriate.
I agree with you there a hundred percent. So we're going to, we're going to try to set up a work session with them. I don't know if they'll be out there or down here. I don't know, but we'll get one set up to where we can.
Did you do, just if you wouldn't mind shooting me a line so I know when it is, if I could pop into it, I will.
Yeah, we'll let you.
Work session out there. Do these guys have to come?
Yeah.
We'll let everybody know.
I don't know if they're, I don't know how it'll be.
You all want Candace or I to try to get that work session coordinated for you all, or do you want to keep dealing with it directly?
Do you also want the lady from, or the person from Morgantown, because they had it on. Their hometown or something, or no, that was.
They have it on their sports teams.
We're talking about somebody from Morgantown too.
I think we just.
Yeah, I think if we just stick with Tucker County and anybody wants to.
You want him to set it up, them to set it up, that would be, you think Candace can set them, we can.
Uh, I know you can, but let me look at my calendar at home.
Well, that's what we'll coordinate with your all days too.
Get two or three dates. Get two or three dates and then, cause.
My computer today is just not cooperating.
You got Mike's number?
I've got, I'm. Robert Del Trello, that's something, that's something that Candace and I.
Go on in, go on in, you're good. Are you Robert Marsh?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We'll get you here in a minute.
Okay, no problem.
You're kind of just sign in.
Sign in over there if you would please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, uh.
You guys want to have it there or here? I mean, I feel like here would make the most sense. I think you're going to have.
I think we'll have more people here. It'd be better for us if they'd be willing to come.
Plus, if they're willing to snow up there every day from now until May.
I'll tell you one, I will tell you one thing. I hate to say this about Tucker County because I like them.
Yeah.
But when it comes to. Uh, directing traffic and letting you know what's going on. You're terrible. Yes, we stayed for an hour and a half the other evening for no reason in that snowstorm.
It started, it started up there fourteen inches. I saw Canadian Valley said they got it like fourteen inches.
I don't believe anything I see on.
It was a pour in the snow down through Monday.
It's good for the resort.
Okay. Okay, so we'll get that set up. And we'll, I'll work it out. That's all. I think I've got any questions on that.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it working.
Okay, if there's nothing else for that, uh, levy fee for the ambulance starting, they'll move one down to the state. Surplus sale, county surplus sale, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so we sold the stuff, well, I sold the stuff really, really cheap. We just wanted to get rid of it and I hated to see anything go to waste. We made like. I didn't bring the exact numbers, but around two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty dollars off the actual sale of stuff. And then I think we made it out two hundred and seventy off scrap, so around five hundred dollars.
Now, make one thing clear, because I've been hit up about this. We. We only sold one of them desks we got from Charleston. The rest of them was used, correct?
Yeah, because they use, they ended up using those one.
I don't.
And, yeah, yeah, they ended up being used. Security is using them.
Okay.
I think it was just one from Charleston and then one that we had for the death and blind school was all.
Yeah, that's fine, they need it. Uh, okay, any questions on that? Okay, discuss the proven administrator's job description.
I emailed that to you all. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I did.
Are they containers?
Sorry, are the containers been moved yet? Uh, I talked to Roger about it on Friday and he said they would get them taken care of as soon as possible because. I mean, of course, it's already too close. You're supposed to get back to six, but I'd like to seed that grass before it gets.
There is a table in there, the big court probation needed was still sitting inside.
Yes. Oh, I think, I told me, did they leave it in there? I told maintenance to go. Get that big conference.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know what you all wanted to do with this, um, that's why I sent it over to you, um, there's paper copies of the original or the revised or.
One for each of us, so.
I did one, I have one here.
No, there's not one for each of you. I just throw that one up as I.
I was looking at emails. I looked at it, but I never really read it all back to it, but I did look at it.
Do you have any questions about this?
I don't. I write your resume.
Are you good with it?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you a silly question. Are there anything in there that I need to add?
I'm sure your finger will come up, but.
I think you're good, you're good, you know.
She did ask about job description.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm good, yeah.
At the end, it just says anything else that may come up.
It does. It says all of the duties as assigned by the.
That's why I'm.
Pay for that later.
The only thing that changed about the last one is what I read to you last time, the coordination versus supervision. If you guys want to keep supervision, that's completely fine. Um, but honestly, that's not even how I did it. It was, the department has to always come directly to the commission. And the other thing was the EOC stuff, which I did talk to you at the last meeting about as well.
Yeah, I think we need to, uh, end here with the FEMA and the EOC.
Yeah.
So you, you want to, how do you, what do you want to do with this now, guys?
I guess we have to make a motion to.
There are two different ones?
There's, well, there's the original.
And then there's the revised one.
The revised one just adds the FEMA and the EOC stuff. Basically, uh, require any administrator to be. Uh, take the FEMA forces and then, uh. Uh, be available if there's emergencies or disasters that they report to the EOC.
And her and I have already talked about that. We went up to the EOC on Mondays, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised version.
I I sent him that.
You guys want to get Lauren that revised?
Do you want to keep this on record? What do you want to do?
It's in her folder.
It's in the human resources folder or?
I have a reminder, so we can throw that one away.
That's the original. I've got it too.
Just in case, save.
Thanks, we got a reminder.
Okay, so that's been approved. Okay, uh, before we go any further. It's a quarter till camp.
Do you have anybody else coming, sir? Or is it just you?
Yeah.
No, it's just me.
Just you. Well, I'll tell you what, I know. Uh, I know you're probably going to hate to miss some of this meeting, but if you want to come up, say your name and your reasons for being here.
And you're certainly welcome to stay at U S B, but they're just, no one's usually.
We're not trying, we're not trying to rush out. You can stand there, you can sit it here, whatever's.
It'll be.
For you, okay, whatever's coming.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
I've leased property in Fort, I think down with them for the last. Ten, fifteen years. I know you're supposed to go to a year's lease. Instead of, I've been signed a five year leases on two properties that I lease. I understand you're going to a one year lease. Is that true or false?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to extend it to a five year. Is there any reason? That I can't do that?
Um, we had some, several years ago, we had some property usage issues, um, and. Needed to get some ground back or, um, had some neighbor disputes. So rather than having long term leases, we decided to go to year to year, so that could be better managed when issues arise.
Okay, but that doesn't. Back me down where I live, true, is that true or false? Well, what you've had is up the road.
Well, but all of our properties are now on a year to year lease. It's it's not like, uh, just because one place, it's we we did across the board.
Now, I did not know this, but according to Jason, we can't. By state code, we can't lease it no more a year. We're only allowed to do it one year at a time. I did not know that because I've been here for a while and I know what you're saying. I never knew we wasn't allowed to do.
Now, there's no way, or there is, is there a way that I could buy those two parcels?
Well, we can't sell them.
I I understand that. I'm just asking.
And that's because they're. If they're female buyout properties where they tore down, um, houses for blood mitigation.
Yeah.
In municipalities, it goes to the city and non municipalities, it goes to the county commission, but that commission has to keep it forever, basically, and you cannot make any improvements to it. You will also notice, one, the new year to year lease, the requirements have become much more stringent.
Now, I haven't seen, I haven't seen that.
Okay, yeah.
Such as?
Um, well, for example, like no improvements can be made to the property. Uh, the property can't be used for revenue production, uh, just those kinds of things.
Okay.
It's got some maintenance stuff in it.
And the only reason we've been leasing that for however long is basically. Privacy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. In the very beginning, when this all happened, I think they were going to put a recreational. They thought about it.
They thought about it. Yes, sir, you're right.
Yeah, and I. I didn't want, I didn't want that, neither did. Three or four others that are they're leasing, I guess they're leasing now, still up the road. But when you do just a year's lease. Will you make decisions to do something like a recreational thing? Will we be notified well in advance? In other words, I don't want anything. On those two properties except for me to mow grass. Gives me something to do.
So, my opinion, sir, I'm tickled to definitely keep leasing it. And I don't really want to put nothing down there. I don't. Now, I'm not speaking for the rest. You're living in any way.
To to make a recreation area, we can't put anything on there to begin with, so.
I'm just gonna, you're saving us a little bit to work, but mowing it, I'm happy with it.
And and we did take two of the lots already and make public access.
Yes, I know that.
Yeah, we would, I mean, I can't speak for the commission, but there's no intentions of doing it anymore. It's already really hard for us to get people down there to maintain that.
Okay.
Um, I I can't speak forever, but certainly there's definitely no plans in the works. We've got plenty of work to do on the properties we have to maintain now.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that, we, I mean.
Really, I mean, we can't promise it would never happen, but.
I understand that.
Because years, the commissioners change and down the road, and that's another reason why we can't really do a long term lease.
Okay.
As well, is because commissioners change and opinions change and. Know they want to do different things, so. Um, then again, it's, it's, there's an area that.
Okay.
If it'd be left up to me, I'd say lease it for another five. But we can. I did not know we wasn't allowed to mow down.
If you change your mind.
Uh, if state codes it allows.
When does your lease actually expire?
December thirty first.
Okay.
Yes, I I haven't received anything yet about. I know it's going up to a hundred bucks instead of ten dollars, which is.
And then the, she does, um. Mrs. Wilson has the new leases prepared if you wanted to sign them while you were up here.
I can sign them and pay for them.
Correct, okay, then I'll direct you back here to. I keep wanting to say Joe's.
We're going to say Wilson, she just got married.
Do you have anything else for them? I'll walk over.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for renting them, by the way, leasing them.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. I wish, to me, I'd get into that. That we wouldn't have.
I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting for the commission to sign their membership.
With us, yeah, that's.
I don't know why I didn't, well, my, I do know why you didn't help me on the day. The agenda was open, I didn't. When?
Uh, okay, new business. Okay, this is, uh, from, uh, the sign by Kent Leonhardt. About the, uh, Honorable County Court of Mineral County, the accessories of Mineral County Jail Causener has completed the farm census. Twenty twenty-five is satisfactory, without the requirements of farm statistic law. She is therefore eligible to receive compensation for the county court. According to chapter seven, article seven, section sixteen of the new code of West Virginia. Make a motion, whether to prove this.
And burn.
Prove that also. Okay, set the dates for the border review.
Did y'all bring your February? Gave Jill two days that the state can use, so I don't know if you actually have to set them today. You don't have your.
Well. It don't make any difference to me.
I just know with everybody's schedule, and then if you don't have your scheduled calendar, and you overlap with something, and then we have to change everything, it gets messy.
I know, I agree with you. Can we wait until next month?
I think so. Cause I don't have my, I was trying to set the date yesterday for January, figured I'm like, I don't have a calendar.
So that's gonna be better for you too. You know what, calendars never run out. We lost mine.
But, um.
So we're saying we're holding on.
Yeah, that's, I, I agree with that. First, December, we'll look at that. Development, sorry, there's a issue that needs.
The development only resolution and grant.
Yes, this is just the annual resolution for their local economic development grant, um, I have a copy of it here. This year's commitment would be forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Forty-one thousand five hundred. And I believe the way we're handling it now is after you all sign this resolution, we just go ahead and cut the check. Cause we were having problems with keeping it clean by waiting till the next fiscal year and stuff like that.
And that would have to be on the budget revision, I'll have a budget revision done at the next meeting, because we just finished the fiscal year.
This is the same amount as last year, so you probably don't remember. No, we put one there and just said it was.
Yeah, is that in the budget then, or not?
Yeah, we put it in the budget, but just have to revise it if it's more, this year, I don't think it was more. Cause they can't get their local economic development funds unless we match them. So, now mind you, the budget's well over a million dollars now. But, um, this is just something the commission's always done, I do think we already allocated funds.
No, we're rich, forty-one thousand. Yeah, I was just saying, we already cut one this fiscal year.
No, we didn't, cause no, cause we got everything straightened up by the year before.
I said it was already in the budget, it's approved in the budget, do we have to make a motion to approve it again?
No, but the resolution.
The resolution. I think the motion we approved the resolution.
Then we sign or?
Uh, to you sign.
Okay, nevermind.
Okay, rainy day. Uh, she did read it?
Yes, so we had another C D come up, um. I didn't pull the earning numbers, but I think it was around twelve thousand dollars. I just expired though, your options are, they're all in the threes, so three point eight for three months, three point seven for six, three point seven for nine, three point six five for twelve, three point six for fifteen, three point five for eighteen.
Yeah, you're going downhill.
Yeah, they are, because interest rates are going down, so the banks aren't committing larger interest rates as you get.
What's a year?
The twelve-month term is three point six five, and a nine-month term is three point seven.
What was the three point eight?
Uh, three point eight's for a three month.
No.
You're at three and a half for eighteen months. Or three, well, once you get really long-term, you get back up into the high threes, like four years, three point seven five, five years, three point seven five, but that's a.
That's a big commitment to make for rainy day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Without any time at market. The market's losing. She gave you way more options than she usually does.
If I knew you guys wouldn't spend money, I'd make it five years.
I like four years, cause then we won't spend it.
Four years.
Well, like I said, you can take it out at market rate, but if market conditions change, you're at risk of losing several thousand dollars, but. It, this, okay, this is also not a million dollars, this is one two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar C D. This is not the full fund.
This is only one?
This is just one of the CDs, cause they're all at different terms.
Who said, what bank is this through?
But then price or rent, we had other.
I hate to see them, first United dropped their CDs.
Yeah, cause they're, they're really just a, they're kind of like a reseller, is what they're really doing.
And to all the banks who are, yeah, so. So. Yeah, just forget ours for administering, great, they're the best that.
So that C D was a fifteen-month C D, and it grew by fifteen thousand three hundred and four dollars.
Well, right now, if we do a year, three point six five. And we don't have our money tied up for a year, something will come up.
Yeah, the biggest problem with doing the short terms is in a year, you're not going to, you're probably not, if interest rates keep going in the direction they are. You're probably not going to be able to get a three percent rate again. That would be. Well, four years is a really long time. But, you're also not, chances are in a year, we're not. If this were last year, I would say just one year, because you would, the interest rates were going down, but the way rates are going now, I don't look for you to go and get those kind of rates again.
But one-year contract thing, does that come in this one year though? You're committing money that, ah, our commissioners.
I don't think that comes in play, there's not necessarily a contract, and you can get out of that.
So you can pull it, I'm not sure.
Well, if you have to draw, I never draw one out early, so I don't, I don't know. But if you'd ever have to draw it out, if you put it in for four years, three seven five, and you have to draw it out, uh, what do they take it, how much does that actually cost us?
So it doesn't mean that it'll cost you anything, it's based on that current market rating of your funds. It could be two point oh at that time when we draw it out, so.
No, I'm talking about if you draw it out early.
If you draw it out early, there's no penalty, you get the market, the current market value of your funds. So you're guaranteed that three and a half percent, but in the time, if interest rates go down, your money might now be worth two hundred and forty thousand, I don't know. Um, but then at the end, no matter what you get, it's like, you look at market value of our funds during the C D term, there are a couple thousand dollars less than what we actually invested, but at the end of the term, you're guaranteed your. So it's not a penalty, cause I talked to you about that, it's not a penalty, it's current market value on funds.
If it was five point one. It, it would be a lot of it, but.
Yeah, yes, yes, well, I don't know.
Of course you can draw it out.
I don't know.
Cause that'd be something. Doesn't work the opposite way, if it was, say the interest rate was six, six percent instead of three point five.
I don't think it works that way, though. Honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I know there's no penalty though, it's your current, it's current value, market value of your funds is what, what you get. Cause I did have discussion with the net about that.
I was saying, we just closed down the last fiscal year, and there wasn't a single cent added to rainy day. All last fiscal year, where did the money go? There was not a single cent added to rainy day last year.
Was there a decrease?
No.
No, this, this even.
But she stayed exactly where it was.
Those CDs would just show the same amount until.
But once these are mature and any interest is coming in.
They asked us where to deposit it, they made a motion, I'm not sure we did.
It was supposed to go back on the rainy day, it's a rainy day. You can't, we're not inter, intermixing funds, it's a rainy day fund.
Well, I don't think, I don't, you all voted.
Could put it in general company.
No, rainy day.
She, cause.
Do we couldn't, you can't, you can't sign, Roger.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda for next week, and then we'll get Roger's side of it, yeah.
Because December thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, I don't see my response to her. But she said I will transfer the twenty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents to the checking account.
That would be the, should be the rainy day, that's where it came out of.
So we just need the.
Rainy is on a checking, it's a money market, isn't it?
Won't that be in the minutes?
Yeah, and it's a rainy day.
Yeah, oh, we have, so she, he's saying she put it in checking, so we need to make sure it gets transferred out, back out of checking to the rainy day.
No, it's the rainy day account, it's like, consider checking. Cause we need to write a check out of checking, we have, we need to write a check out of checking. But there's six, six hundred some left in that account, in the checking account. One million of it in four two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar CDs we're investing. But there's still the six thousand still in the checking account.
The decision was made on January second, I don't have those. I'll check it, or I don't know, but your thing rainy day didn't.
Didn't any increase all year. But I don't know, and this is the problem that Chris and I talked about, but Chris in the tax office, she's not getting the information. So she can't put in what she's not receiving. So, we try to make sure that she gets the information she needs, but it should reflect it on the.
Let's get all of that.
I don't know, yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I can ask in this email, where I saw what rate y'all wanna get to.
Yeah, and there's some accounts that seem to be drawing pretty good interest, and some accounts that aren't getting any interest, so I think that's something we need to look at too, Michelle. So it's kind of funny that some of the smaller accounts that weren't interested in the larger accounts, so.
What you guys wanna do for this?
Well, the accounts that are over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, they said cost of funds to secure them is so expensive that they can't. Like, there's, they're, they can't really gain interest because they're paying to secure our projects. So the smaller accounts would more if they gained, cause they're under the automatic.
To tie it up for four years, it's a lot easier than if it was.
I like the way you guys said. Only returns it out.
But only to tie that up for four years versus.
Well, I'm good with it, if you guys, especially on, we're getting more interest.
So let me do, I think, I think the interest rate will keep going down.
I think.
Yeah, I think that's my concern.
We'll do, don't think four years will be another presidential election, we don't know what's gonna happen.
There are two years, three years? So we just don't know eighty months or four years.
Then there's a two-year.
No, there's a two-year plan, but it's three sixty, the, the, there are three months, three eighty, six months, three seven, uh, nine months, two seven, one year's three six five, fifteen months is three sixty, eighteen months is three fifty, and two years is three sixty. Uh, thirty months is three sixty, three years is three six five, four years is three seven five, five years is three seven five. You guys decide what you wanna do, I'm good with it, however you wanna go. There's not really that much. No, I don't wanna see Kennedy, I, I don't wanna see that.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, invested in the four-year three point seven five. I'll second that. The two hun, the, the current, right now, the current amount is two hundred and fifty?
Yes, they're all, all the CDs, we have four two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar CDs.
So two hundred and fifty thousand.
When were the others expired?
We just renewed.
I thought we just renewed.
I'd have to ask her.
They were, I think we got long-term with them too. Uh, eight, I thought eighteen months.
I was thinking eighteen months.
Yeah.
Yeah, she didn't give us anything.
Yeah.
That stuff changes, every time you turn around, it's changing. I'd like to know what I'm setting between, cause only two hundred and fifty thousand, well, what are you guys doing?
I got, I might have two hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay.
I don't even have that.
I had to joke about that, it's a way to come out. Nine-one-one center console replacing.
I emailed her and I copied you and pressed on.
Oh, you got nine-one-one?
Yes, so. Nine-one-one has had the same consoles for, since the center was built. Uh, they were originally installed by Zivix for sixty grand back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, so they were ordered. And, uh, they are, all of the, so they're motorized, so they can stand up, sit down, all that kind of stuff, so the dispatch doesn't have to sit for a twelve-hour shift. Well, the stand-sit function has stopped functioning quite some time ago, uh, but we weren't previously in a position. She all cast those down. Previously in a position to replace furniture, um, almost three of the four have bad motors, they don't go up and down anymore, one of the legs is broken and held up by a two-by-four. Um, and they're, I mean, they're used literally twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So for a couple years, I've been going back and forth with Zivex on pricing, design, all of that stuff. And I just haven't brought it to you all, or, um, asked to make a commitment, cause I haven't had the time to oversee the replacement. And it's a thing, cause the center still has to function while we're ripping out furniture and putting new in, and this, these computers and everything. So, what I would like to do is replace all four consoles, as well as our locker room furniture, and the conference room table in there, you can see the full workup of everything we're asking for, um. The cost is substantial, it is one hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and five cents. Now, that's all four consoles, it's full computer cabinets, the new locker room lockers, um, a new conference table, new bookshelves, it replaces all of the furniture in the dispatch center. It's one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred maybe one dollars and five cents. So, they have a, a G S A contract as well as a, um, another group procurement contract, so we don't have to do R F P, we can, um, do it based on, this is G S A pricing they gave us, um. So I wanted to bring this to you all, gather your thoughts on it, so nine-one-one, about a year and a half ago, we put a two-hundred-thousand-dollar C D back for projects such as this, that C D matures on the eighth of next month. So, um, I would like to use a portion of that C D to replace this furniture, um, this is something that, like I said, is used every day, I was, I was figuring it out, just, just out of curiosity. So like, a desk in this building, in the last five years, gets about twenty-six thousand hours of use, I mean, the last fifteen years. And a desk in that building gets a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred hours of use.
So you got the money to pay for it?
We have money to pay for it, yes. Now, what I've not done yet is, when we do this, there's some recabling I have to do, and some electrical work I have to do. I did not get quotes on that, cause if you all tell me no on this, I didn't wanna waste their time coming in to do that.
But you got the money to do it all.
We have money to do it all, for sure, and our UPSs, um, I know what they're gonna cost to replace, they're about thirty grand, but I need to get a formal quote. They were installed in two thousand nine. They were installed in two thousand nine, Jerry France actually donated them to us. And they were used at that point when he gave them to us, and it was extremely generous, I appreciate it, it's got us through for sure, they've been great. But we spend five thousand dollars every three years replacing batteries in them. And, like, one of the UPSs literally has a plastic tote on top of it that holds additional batteries, so it can carry the load. Um. So those need replaced as well, and then we would have to re-cable, because. When the building was built, most of them, one centers had a raised floor with tiles that pull up, our building does not, they, they conduit everywhere. And, um, this furniture, the way we're re, the way we're configuring this, we cannot use the floor conduit anymore, because we're making the circle wider. We're putting the furniture against the walls rather than squished them together. So we'll have to run the game like through the ceiling instead of through the floor, which is what I've wanted to do forever anyways, because that way we can actually get to it. We have a problem, we're not pulling it for tons and tons of fee. So I wanted to bring that to you all, um, and if you're okay with the furniture, I'll get all the other former quotes, but I have to bring small content, so I didn't wanna do that, if you all wanna come out. Do the furniture, and it is something important, all of my team has looked at those plans, I left them later there for several weeks and talked to every ship about them. Um, and the, and we actually made some visions based on what they said. Uh, one of the other things that we're adding that'll be very nice, that seems like, that seems unimportant. Is this peninsula right here, so our law enforcement dispatcher has to do like all of our NCIC entries and something in terminal. They just have to swish everything on their desks and their file cabinet with all the active warrants, missing people, all that is over in a closet. So this peninsula, they could go actually go to spread their documentation out on the file cabinet. Or all of the active warrants and stuff will actually be in the peninsula, not that walking across the room to a file cabinet's the end of the world. Um, but when the guys are out with somebody and we need to confirm a warrant, it sure is more convenient just to go pull it out right beside you rather than. Having to get off your console, and that way they have room to spread out all the documents, they need when they're doing entries and removals and all that kind of stuff.
Have you ever looked into seeing how much the motors are, just to replace the motors?
It's end of life, we have replaced motors, we did that, but you can't.
Is that furniture been there since nine one one?
Yes, it's original.
Which I thought was. Well, that's not on the news.
It's, it was just nine twenty one, sorry, this. So that's what I'm saying, it's got a hundred and thirty one thousand hours of use on it, that's, uh.
If you got the money, I'm good with it, myself.
And I did, I started our twenty twenty seven budget just to confirm, because there's a bunch of other stuff I'm gonna be bringing to y'all in the next couple of weeks. As I get things in, um, and we're looking good, I got our first wireless check, you got a little nervous, because it was less than what I projected, but it's because it's one month. Behind one current collection, so it's gonna be, I call it PSC and dollar actual numbers for what they'll be. Um, and everything's looking good, and the warranties are a little better than I was.
And the CD matures, it's on the eighth, but it's two hundred and forty that's in there?
No, it's two hundred, we just did a two hundred thousand dollar CD.
Okay.
But, um, I don't know if payroll's been done yet, but prior to payroll deductions, nine one one's account with our most recent check was like. It was like, just a little over a million dollars is what we were sitting on, now payroll was gonna be two hundred and. And that was on my other desk, payroll's like two hundred, that, it'll bring us down to like seven fifty-ish, let's say. In that account, but our operating balance has been more than healthy, actually, we haven't dropped below five hundred thousand, not counting the CD. Like, uh, the CD's not been in there, it's been separated, we've not dropped below five hundred thousand since we did the CD.
We only had July August and September payroll, it was two sixty three.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's. Four hundred's been there since nine nine. Seventeen, sixteen years, you, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And it's, like I said, it's true twenty four seven abuse, I mean, there is a bud at that desk all the time. And that's what I did, asked some of the other nine one one centers who they're using for furniture. And a lot of them are using Zybix, I explored two other companies, but. Their designs and stuff were a little wackier than I cared for, and like, they got like, uh. Just an odd look to them, like, the ones look like news anchor desks.
Did they put it in bids as well?
No, I did not bid anyone else, I just kinda looked at the styles.
Well, we need to get free bids to do this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this is a GSA contract, so we don't have to, it's a fed, they've got a federal government procurement contract. And there's another contract we can go under if you guys don't want to use the GSA, but it's, um, well, here's the actual, well, sorry to cast that along. And the one thirteen does include install, demolition, removal, all that of all the old stuff.
So if you run the cables into the ceiling, or then you come down inside the wall, or will you drop?
More dropped, dropped, yeah. Also, actually, they, you can see it in the, in the renderings, they got the cable drops in there.
Okay, I see it.
And they'll come down against the wall, but.
And how they do it, we'll just do one time at a time, so you don't lose service?
Yes, yeah, we'll do one position at a time. I also explored replacing the carpet with them, just while we were doing it, that carpet is relatively new, it's. Four or five years old, hot water heater busted, um, shortly after I became administrator, we had to replace it all. I loved it replacing the carpet, just because like, everything's gonna be out of there. But their carpet was like almost twenty thousand dollars, but it's not some sort of copper grounding material in it, and we'll just keep the carpet we got, get it scrubbed. Cause it's got this carpet, except for a little, I don't know, a little blue there.
True. Jeez.
Break.
Yeah, I did.
I did. Well, you picked up one of those desks, you'll see why it's expensive to ship it, trust me, I picked them up and disassembled them multiple times, and it's, uh.
Yeah, they're hidden. What are you guys saying? It's nothing I hate. Two floors holding in them. That's, that's, it's ten.
Oh, two floors are holding there? Just, just in one place, I guess, and that's been there for several years.
Doing that shower, the renderings, and said, uh.
Yeah. Well, that's all they do is control room furniture, so.
That's gonna affect your, um, TVs, you know, as well, too.
Yeah, we're gonna fix those. Actually, if you all approve this, that's, we're gonna paint that, paint it all ourselves and do some work like that for the, and come and solve the furniture.
Probably see their controlled cabinets.
Yeah, the cabinets have, um, have like electric fan built in, we've got in school.
Do they have filters built in to filter on persels, you know?
Um, our current ones do not.
I just made a whole made ones, just part of regular air conditioning filter part of the spring.
Oh, it works. That, that makes sense, yeah.
Well, Mr. Stanks, what prompts are you having?
Um.
A lot of mine.
I agree, not gonna argue this yet.
And that's still not the estimate on electrical?
That's definitely not the estimate, electrical for the cabling, which will be two separate projects.
Is some of that electrical, uh, in the floor?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to run electrical for all the consoles too, which the panel box for the consoles is literally right on the other side of the wall, so. They, um.
You don't have any, you don't have any prices for that yet, then?
The key, I was gonna get a press, I wondered if we approved. Yeah, and I mean, if you guys, and even if you're not fully comfortable approving this today. If I, if you were gonna give me a hard no, I'm not gonna waste a bunch of people's time coming up. But if you feel pretty sure this is something you're gonna be willing to do, I can get a full budget together, I just don't wanna waste people's time if those gonna come, it's gonna be a hard no.
Right, I, I would, I would feel more comfortable approving the furniture, knowing that. Instead of approving furniture and then approving the furniture and then, then we have to lock the money in cabling and stuff, so. I mean, I'm okay with moving forward and getting other prices.
Okay.
But I'm not real comfortable with approving this without knowing what else is gonna be happening.
That's what I was trying to determine, if you're oppositional in the furniture or not, because like, if you were gonna say no to the furniture, I wasn't gonna waste a bunch of people's time coming up there.
I'm not closing talking through it.
Yeah, after this whole building project here, do you think you have a rough estimate, what do you think electrical?
No, because I've gotta go. Honestly, there, there's not gonna be that much electrical work to do, because Zybix actually provides like.
It's all built into the.
Into the furniture, they just have to have.
A separate.
I feel like two. I, I can't remember, they've just gotta have like two twenty amp.
Yeah.
Outlets to each console, and then their stuff runs it.
Okay, Cardinal come and do some cabling?
We did, so Cardinal redid our network grid. And Cardinal will have to come do this too, that's, that's who I'm gonna call, which actually, since I've been up there, um, the other day when you all were up there for the judging. I don't, you probably didn't get to that hallway, but it was full of trash, because I've been cleaning out, I, I spent. Couple shifts, um, ripping stuff out of the ceiling and cleaning some stuff up myself that had just been sitting there for years, but yeah, Cardinal will have to come do the cabling. Cause we're gonna punch everything down differently than what we did this time, and Global, Alex, he is fantastic, I really like Alex. Um, he's come, he's been up there three times, four times. Uh, and sat down with me and talked about network configurations, because some of that I wanna redo as well, and fill in some additional redundancy, so.
I'll tell you what, let's put this on.
The next agenda, I can have it.
You can have it, but then?
Well, that's the week of Thanksgiving, and I'm going to Louisville Friday for the conference.
But I will, I will, first quarter, first in.
Okay, December, I'll definitely have it.
Okay, and then we'll get everything.
Changes.
Do you remember thirty day?
Oh, no, I've had this price for several weeks, I've just been going over with everybody and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, okay, let's do that then, hold it over till.
Yeah, this actually, my February fifteenth, well, it does expire. This week, but they'll, they'll regret it this, right, it's not, but nothing changed.
Double checking.
I will.
Yeah, okay, uh, what's this local disaster declaration?
Yes, so I talked to you guys about that at the last meeting, um. Oh, I'll make sure I'm on. Okay, so, rather, last time in May, when we had the flooding. I literally called you all and asked you to do a disaster declaration, then wrote phone consent on it. But that disaster declaration goes to the state emergency management department and the governor's office. And I would prefer to have something that's actually signed and the documents ahead of time. So what I did, and what I'd like to do, is have you all pre-approved. So this would be an emergency meeting agenda, so, because we're not gonna have time to call or form, if I need it, it's gonna be a phone call. So there would just be an emergency agenda that I would send to Lauren to distribute out to the appropriate people and for Cassandra to put on the left side. And then, um, we would just meet on the phone, I would like to have your signatures on this, and then the day you all approve it. We would fill it in, and then, same thing with the resolution declaring the emergency spending authority. Um, it's just blanks that you all could decide by, it would say.
Like the day.
Thousand dollars. Right, exactly, and it would say, be a further resolved, the commission hereby designates whoever is coming to the O C, whoever you find to be appropriate. We write it in, the amount they can approve, and then. This would just be the other thing we have on file, because all three of you aren't gonna be able to come to the O C, I mean. Honestly, it needs to be a, a five minute meeting, what we call you all, to give you authorization, so that's why I wanted to have it all pre-signed and be ready.
But then we have to do this every year, because lectures will take their.
Yes, yeah, we would definitely redo it, and. And what you would be doing is approving the template, those, your signatures are going to be on it, but they mean nothing without minutes that correspond with the approval date. So, I mean, I guess they wouldn't mean anything if I sent it to a vendor and said that, but I certainly hope that you all can trust me enough to know I'm not gonna. Misuse your signatures, but, um, our last proclamation looked really janky, but, um.
If it's one minute. If it's one minute, next minute it won't.
Are you, this one here, the, um.
The resolution declaring, you want signatures on this one too?
Yeah, I'd like to have it all pre-signed, and if you guys would approve it, I say it on the phone, but I would try to do it with Zoom. That way it could be, where we're all recorded as well, and that could be from two as well.
First, we would have to declare, make sure I understand, we'd have to declare a disaster, uh, so that we can have a meeting without three day notice.
No, so you can call an emergency meeting at any time, okay, but you, it, it does, it is supposed to be posted as soon as practical, okay? But certainly an emergency, um, that requires a proclamation meets the ethics commission's guidelines, so. To not have it posted. But that's why I'm saying I'd like to be able to make it as transparent as possible, as far as if the agenda is done. Eileen could scan and send that to Lauren, Lauren can send it out to people, so they know that it happened. If we do it via Zoom, we can record it, it can still be put on YouTube, like, but the meeting will be less than five minutes.
But you want this signed by us?
Yeah.
And then the blanks will be filled in whenever there's a.
Correct. Exactly, it would just hang on a whiteboard in the E O C. So that, because we scan them into our emergency management information system that is shared with the state. So like, we scan the actual documents to somebody, is why I would like to have an actual signed document.
It's gonna only do things like the flood and explosion.
It'd be something huge, like, in nine years, we got to go to the E O C one time, and that was for that, well, we activated during COVID technically. But the flood was the first time we got down.
So that our signatures aren't mis, misused, how would we word it in minutes today? Um, so the.
I would just say approve the template.
Prove and sign the template.
Yeah.
Prove and sign the templates, only to be used.
And when you scan that in, you have to scan it in right then and there?
Yeah, they want the declaration as soon as your marketing can be, because the state won't send resources until the local disaster is declared. So even when the governor declares a state of preparedness or a state of emergency, the state of preparedness is called ahead of time, and that means state resources can be released. But if he's gonna call a state of emergency, he wants to see that the counties are calling their own state of emergency to actually be, be emergency.
But that you, you would do, uh, this, but if something happened, you weren't here, somebody else could misuse our signature, that's my only thought, I haven't had that. That you, if you weren't having to be in the job or something like that, somebody else comes along, we don't trust working here.
And I hope y'all don't hire nobody you can't trust, well, it's taking time to signature.
Things have to build the relationship too.
Yeah.
That, how fucking do you just have to be renewed every year?
We have to do.
Well, every time there's election.
I heard.
If there's a new election, then.
Yeah.
So if you, if you sign that, you're saying you're gonna stay on for another six years.
No, I'm not.
I guess I'll make a motion that we, um. Pre-authorize, uh, disaster, uh, proclamations.
Resolution.
Resolution, um, template, template for emergency purposes only. And then like I said, we would never use any of those items until, till some, we spoke to at least two of you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow, and I approve that also. Okay, you want us to go on?
There is an attestation on the resolution, I wasn't sure if you'd be comfortable signing it or not, so.
They're gonna sign.
Yes, they're gonna sign.
I'm just signing the same as I'll done sign.
Okay.
You want us to sign this now?
Yeah, I as well.
Yes, sir.
My biggest thing is always when the signatures are not on the same page as the resolution, that's okay.
Yeah, that, that way for me.
That, that way it squeeze all those in there, yeah.
Yeah, this was definitely one of the things we noted in here, we are needed to look at each other because it was.
All right, as soon as I can get done here. Now, this, this next one here, does this involve sheriff, like the X ray?
This is the sheriff.
I tell you what, you made that decision. It doesn't involve me, I don't have to discuss the eleven thousand dollar bill.
We'd like to, we'd like to get your input, is this what the auto here letter as well? You've got any sentiment?
Yeah, I, I think that, that bill is crazy and you're not even willing to pay that we're gonna purchase elsewhere for better. Services, paying a guy five thousand dollars just to come down and service the machine.
This is for the, the X ray agent, for one X ray.
One guy come down and service the machine, I got, this, that's not counting a part of them.
If you're wondering, when we bought the machines with shipping, they were only fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they will, they even.
I looked this morning.
That's crazy.
So is this a thing where he's the only one in the area that can do this?
That's from New Jersey.
Okay, then I'm assuming there are others that we can, we're gonna find those.
So that auto clears the manufacturer.
Okay.
That's, that's why he has that.
Starts, uh, is searching right now, looking for other service companies.
But this is only for one, this is only for one unit, on this quote for six thousand.
Six hundred, so one needs a new computer and then the other, why he's here to service is my understanding.
Now, there's two, if you look on there, there's two serial numbers that they're considering service.
So this is a replacement part, this sixty-six hundred, they, they provide you that. So that's only on one.
The commission, the, they are supposed to. So no decisions need to be made on that.
Not, not here.
Okay, now, did you want an executive session with us?
Yes, you can.
And so this time.
This one, is this what you run hot topic here? Okay.
What is it?
The overtime.
Oh, yeah, that one, that would be.
Oh, oh, you want, oh, I'm sorry, you are, I, I mean, I seen this, but you didn't. Or maybe you, you wanna address this letter?
Sure, what is the letter?
Uh, here.
Funny.
Thirteen thousand.
Need to dress, that's in my budget, we're going to four and one eight.
Yeah, it's a budget, that's.
That's what I'm saying, why does it need to be addressed here?
Well, I need clarification before I waste.
You need clarification from who, me, that's in my budget, Lauren.
When you guys did the budget back in March, you wanted the overtime of the sheriff's department broken down. Regular overtime, K nine training, events and holiday. With that, you can't do it through payroll, what we have to do is we have to pull out all the time sheets. And do a spreadsheet that, um, how much of their time, each officer, what their pay rate was. How much was overtime because of holiday, how much was a special event and. We're working on the first quarter of that right now. And so there's nothing been taken out of holiday events or K nine, because we had to do the spreadsheet and then we have to manually figure that over. So with his letter, he was requesting that the, um, events line item, the item back into the overtime. And I'm pointing, well, I'm great with that, cause then I don't have to worry about moving all the other stuff over either.
I can simplify it for you, if you wanna know how much we spend in event, ask me and I'll give you exactly how much we spend on them, whatever event it is. You won't beat those spreadsheet, I'll give you a total of a number of people and how much each person made of their overtime. Same with holidays, we know when the holidays are, when they work the holiday, I'll tell you how much we spend.
I would like to have that list of the, of the events.
Sure. I won't have to load it in a spreadsheet, I can give you a list of people with how much it costs us.
Oh, I would like to have that.
We had done that spreadsheet for you back in, for twenty-three, twenty-four, we did one for twenty-four, twenty-five. I think you did one for twenty-five.
With the events?
They had the holiday court, but we had to go through every time to do the spreadsheets, cause you guys wanted all the.
Starting event.
It's, well, no, and one of the reasons for overtime, one of the reasons for.
That's part of the regular job.
I know, but they were, they were disputing all overtime, so they wanted to know how much of it was for, how much of it was holiday, how much of it was. Covering shifts, how much of it was a holdover, so that's why we started the spreadsheets. But now they actually want us to journal entry it into the budget and I was saying, if I don't have to journal entry it into the budget. That's a whole nother step beyond spreadsheet.
Is that thirteen, that's pretty much what you spend for special events?
Over and I've done yet. What we've had so far was the peach festival, which was not even added into that.
Yeah, I knew it wouldn't.
And.
That's what feels, that, that burns apple hard skills.
And this is, this request is an internal budget revision. But if they were moving the K, I mean, moving the events, I mean, if that holiday and the K nine. Training, which is gonna need for the seminar in the spring.
Yeah, I think when we did this and separated it, the thought was whenever the overtime come in. And they was on an event, that we would pull the money out of that event.
Yeah.
Row, as opposed to the whole overtime, well, you can't do that.
That we have to go through, add in, put in the officer, what the category is, what his rate of pay was. And then move that over into that line item.
I was told that it had to be moved out of my line item to the overtime phase, but it couldn't be done that way.
It's in overtime, it's all, cause it's all overtime, whether it's holiday, covering a shift in a friend. It's, it's all under overtime, but they wanted it for the purposes of the budget, they made up new line items. To break it down or prove that in the margin, prove the budget.
Yeah, but you should do it, it sounds like by doing it this way, it's a lot harder on you all to pull that money in.
Yeah, but I mean, it's two different things, we can go through the spreadsheet, that's not, you know, that's. But then actually went through and putting it back in, journal entries into payroll, each pay period. So if we, for budget purposes, if you're okay with seeing a spreadsheet, you know, we can just toss that at you if you don't actually need to see it. And then his, cause right now it shows as overtime is so much because it's not being broken down by holiday yet such. But it all comes to the hundred ninety-four thousand is what he's budgeting.
I wonder if a, uh. Little upgraded software would make that issue.
I just said that.
It's one of the things that, yeah, I've, I've talked to my vendors about that before, I've seen their. From how?
Okay, they're, they do accounting for a lot of them.
Yeah.
Well, they do it for a lot of the counties, I got a spreadsheet of the ones who have responded and they are down here for a lot of the counties.
He does payroll and account.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, doesn't matter to me, if you wanna go through the process of pulling it out of that line item. For the events, for the overtime from the events. That's fine, if you wanna transfer it over to regular overtime and get us a spreadsheet or get us a list of. Do all this work, how much each event's costing us. It don't matter to me whichever way, just as long as we know, for our time to turn, as long as I know. Apple harvest overtime costs this much, peach festival overtime costs this much and.
Are you okay seeing it in the spreadsheet, you don't actually get to see it on this?
I'm fine with the spreadsheet, that's, I'm okay with the spreadsheet too.
Okay, so can we move the three, four line items all into the one then?
All into the one, but the spreadsheet would show.
Right, the spreadsheet gets all breakdown, it gives you even a more breakdown, cause we have to go through all the time sheets to get that finished anyway.
You have to stand tight. Robert, what, yeah.
Interesting.
Because we did different reports like that before for twenty-two, twenty-three and then twenty-three, twenty-four, I don't know if we did one for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I don't remember seeing a breakdown in the spreadsheet.
You may just do it for, uh.
Well, if we happen to, can we, can they be produced, so I could see them?
Yeah, go get a copy.
But I don't talk about previous.
Yeah, I need you one.
Never had the breakdown.
Yeah. Yes, sir, when you were doing your budget last year. I'll re-print it.
You won't have to, I still got it all.
Okay.
But I've never gotten a spreadsheet of what each event costing.
I don't remember if I did one for, I know we did one for twenty-three, twenty-four, cause you guys, buddy was in. Came in with twenty-five.
I know we seen.
It's like for twenty-three, twenty-four.
I never got the issue.
No, you didn't, cause you have, we're working on this here.
All right. Yeah, whatever is easier.
The spreadsheet, just for the heck of it, I can tell you, you guys wanted them and that's the reason I had to do.
All right, so whatever is easier, that we can get that information.
But I can move these all into one line item.
Commercial mover, all in one line item.
Now, which ones are you moving?
All four of them into one.
All four of what?
That's the holiday, K nine, events into the regular overtime.
Yeah.
Jason, do you have a moment?
I did, I'll be there also.
You understand, Joe, is that okay?
I didn't have any problem with K nine being where it's at for the time being. And that's fine, uh, cause that line item there is nowhere.
Oh, that K nine was for, it's a good second just like, it's a seminar.
That spreadsheet on it too.
Well, there's a portion of that.
Well, now, we're two months in.
All ten thousand dollars that ain't.
July, August, September, it's first.
We still have donations to come into the K nine fund, which is what we use to pay that bill.
I don't know, K nine would have to go into that, would it?
Not into overtime.
I mean, cause that varies every year.
Okay, when we discussed that, we discussed putting that into a K nine fund to pay for a seminar. But that also included, because we don't have the K nine fund separate from anything anymore, it's all included in that.
Now, there's still a K nine fund.
I know, but before it was done separately, it wasn't in a line item, it was just paid for on my house office.
Out of the K nine.
Yeah, and then we were told we could not have that fund, so it had to be put over here into.
Fund's still there, the difference was, is the sheriff was only signature and it was supposed to be a free signature count, so it hasn't changed.
Again, it's in a line item now.
It's in, it's self, it's still in the K nine fund.
I.
Yeah, it's just, it required increasing.
It was never in the line item, it was on, on chart. It was just.
Under general count, no.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, cause it's.
I think we need to leave the K nine where it's at, because I can still pay, because if you move it all over there, then I'm gonna have to pay for the dog, the dog bills, the dog food and everything else out of overtime.
No, there's still a K nine fund.
This is, this is just K nine overtime.
For the K nine handlers, where the overtime is being charged to is the only thing.
This was just budgeted overtime for that.
For your hand, actually.
This isn't the event itself.
Actually, this line item says law enforcement, K nine training.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I'm saying, the year, you're telling.
This is just under salary.
Okay. It, it says K nine.
I get it, listen to me, when this line item was put in here, I know what it was for. It was for the training for the K nine seminar. And then rather than having one signature on it, it all got moved to that line item, which then included pay for dog bills, K nine dues, vet bills, everything.
There is still K nine fund, there is still K nine fund, fund O two A indoor department, it's O one nine in art department. Four thousand, four thousand twenty-seven dollars right now, I think is on your sheriff's report. On your October sheriff's report, the K nine fund is. Cause this is general county.
Well, gentlemen, I don't know what to tell you, cause I'm being told one thing and now it's another.
I'll change that motion, that will just do the law enforcement events and the law enforcement holiday into overtime and not the K nine training.
Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll say, is that what your, what I meant when you first mentioned?
You generally.
No, I, no.
I've been having a whole lot of issues with this place of stuff anyway, especially here in the.
I'll take that one.
So, but, I take it, what Lauren is trying to say, so when we code invoices, O O one is money that's in general county.
Yeah.
So this is in each line item, so you've got salaries and then you've got contracted services. Um, commodities, all of those things, this is not the K nine money that's been donated or special. This is the money that the county said, this is for our K nine handlers to be paid their extra hours for training. It doesn't have anything to do with any hard materials, it's what the guys see on their paychecks. It has nothing to do with the K nine fund that pays for vet bills and those kinds of things, I know what you're saying, but this. Is for the money they see on their paychecks, that's the only thing that comes out of that.
This was all discussed, the way it was described to me that it was gonna be put into that.
But not that line, it's a different line, that line is a salary line. There's salary K nine training line and then there would be like a professional services K nine training line.
Well, we'll clarify that a lot better on the next budget.
But that's what that is, that is just salaries, general county money, it has nothing to do with the K nine money that is separate. It can only be used for salaries, that's what that code is.
There any other budget revisions being there?
There'll be a whole bunch of them in the next, uh, meeting, all of the changes we've made with the salary increases and insurance. I have to go through every department, we'll have a budget revision to the matter. And I probably have at least twenty for, uh, Joe to add.
Okay. What else? You need an extension?
Could anybody be discussed, the generator or?
Uh, we've discussed the generator, we've got two bills, uh, one invoice currently and another one coming. We had to have, uh, service work done on the generator which. That invoice is fifteen hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. That's for general maintenance and preventive maintenance and a low test for the generator. We've got a quote. For. Caution of the fuel tank and fuel lines due to the algae buildup inside the fuel. Which is eighteen hundred dollars. Now, what they do, they come in and they completely remove everything out of the tanks. All the algae out of the fuel lines and everything, clean the current fuel that's in there so people can back into fusion. But my question is, is this coming out of my line item?
It's your generator.
It's by a generator, but who else uses it?
But it, so nine-one-one pays for our generator maintenance and they're for the general county use, the usage though. Doesn't have anything to do with the generator, if it was being used, the algae problem wouldn't be there and the P M should be being done at least every other year in the.
I agree with you, but it hasn't been.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying though, like.
Who else used the generator?
Well, we used it.
My understanding is generator was taken out of the county and used somewhere for something. I can confirm that for J J, but it was also used for new free public service.
Right, so it was purchased, that's why you guys got the grant for emergency use.
For the sheriff.
Right, right, but my, my point is though, the usage of the generator. The generator actually being used would prevent the algae problem, the algae problems, cause it's not been used.
Not necessarily.
And the. And the, it absolutely is.
You can get algae in there for other reasons other than just saying. Nonetheless, okay, if this was something that was brought to the sheriff's department, is it a county thing? If so, you come pick up your generator.
Well, the nine-one center would be happy to take your generator. I'd say seventy thousand dollar generator.
What I'm saying, if that's the case, then who else is gonna help chip in on the service bill other than just me?
But it's, it doesn't matter. You all can do what you want. It's the sheriff's office generators. It's like their cruisers. It's their job to change the oil when they're cruisers. It's part of your budget.
But we don't loan our cruisers out to the New Creek Public Service Department either.
That the only reason you ever got the funding for the generator was for that use. The federal government bought you. Bought you that generator. Yes, to be used for emergency usages such as powering a pump station.
Wouldn't that be the Office of Emergency Management? Wouldn't that be your job to?
That's where you guys got the grant from, was from emergency management. We do. It's not big enough for the pump station. Our generator gets used all over the place. I mean, I don't care who pays. How much are you, how much are you?
It's each, every three thousand. I don't have a problem paying it. I'll pay the bill. I don't have a problem. But if you're gonna look into putting that generator in another place, just get another generator for it.
You, you can't, you cannot say it's not going to be used for those things. The only reason the federal government bought you that generator was so it could be used for those items.
Say me where it says that.
I will. I can email EMP and pull the application. That's why they bought it for you.
Give it to me and I'll tell you no problem. Deal with it. That was bought for the sheriff's department for their usage. We have a department down there that we're waiting to get wired so we can put the generator on it.
It, it, and this sheriff's office has never had a transfer switch to be used, so why would they have paid for it for that?
The park goes forward then, run that department if it needs to be run off the generator.
I'm not, but it doesn't matter with money control. It's all general county money. But the generator has to be maintained. We have ours done every single year and nine-one pays for that.
Who else uses that generator?
The sixty KW goes wherever it's needed. It does, well, it does the pump stations. It does whatever. I just told you. Anyone who would need it.
Has anybody used your generator other than you?
We took it down to the pump station, but ours wasn't big enough for that specific pump station.
And that's the only time?
Yes, sometimes it's been needed, but we've maintained it. Like I said, it doesn't matter where it comes from. It's all general county money, but nine-one-one has to maintain our generators while the sheriff's office might have to maintain theirs.
You have the money to maintain.
Okay, alright, now you want, uh, executive session?
Yes, sir.
Can we bring these two in?
There's no need for them to be in there to discuss my man.
Okay, well, uh. You just sit down.
I make motion to go into the executive session with the sheriff and, uh, I second it.
I make motion to command the executive session.
And I second it. No, just, no, um, decisions was made. So, where are we at now? We're in Alex, we're Dallas, right? So we have to ask for the administrative support.
Um, as of right now, I have nothing. I did see that some counties are getting their OEMS equipment fund check. We have still not got ours. But that will be coming soon. Um, I'm going to the International Association of Emergency Managers Conference Friday, but I will not be back till late, late Wednesday night. So, um, I'll be working with you and this remotely as much as possible, but trying to squeeze in as much of the things as possible before, um, I leave. So I did go around, we did go around, introduce her to everybody and show her the majority of the buildings on Monday. We've not been held for me yet, but, um, Cassandra has scheduled her, both of them are gonna go sit with all the electric officials for our region. Phil is on that list. Yeah, Phil is on that list. So.
Okay, well, J A J and all of them out there.
Yeah, so, well, I can definitely take her out one day, but we didn't make it there on Monday because by the time we went everywhere else.
Schedule that when you're off. That way you give her some.
But I didn't think about it until after, um, and we might still even reschedule them so we can go through some.
Not going on that, take her up soon. A A J and M would like to.
Oh, no, I need her today. This is the only time I have.
After, after the mineral county day meetings?
Yeah, this is the only time I have to like go over stuff with her.
Well, actually, if you need to reschedule our meetings, we can do it.
I did think about it. I've got some stuff scheduled for tomorrow for some other stuff, so I might, we'll, we'll see. I might be able to do that though. Because I was gonna see what Cassandra had scheduled. But anyways, she's training and learning. You all have her cell phone number. Her email address is the same as mine. Um, so she's got everything she needs to be up and operational and, um, yeah.
Soon, sure, things are really very well. You got anything to add?
No, just taking it all in. Met a lot of people on Monday. You know, of course, I had the break in yesterday, so we break in between month. You know, worrying, but yeah, we're good so far. Met a lot of people.
You got any questions?
Not yet. I have them written for him later, so.
Oh, they're, they'll come. Okay, alright, Jason.
Let's see. Um, initially and did on the road, okay, October thirtieth, the, was up to high school. Um, all three of us for the, you know, you weren't there, for the, um, West Virginia treasure.
No, I couldn't.
Meeting with the, the schools from the different counties.
That was the keep, keep the ball rolling announcement.
And yeah, keep the ball rolling. And then after that presented, um, check to short gap. Um, fire department and what we got on. Oh, it's Fort Ashby, Fort Ashby, Saturday, Washington Department and Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office. Yeah, yeah, and those were. Yeah, but those were all, um, here, all the schools that were there got a check. Uh, and then, uh, November third, north into the county for the, um, opening of the office, the tax office. Um, November fourth, Carperdale Council meeting went to that. November fifth, uh, we, we were all at the Summit Awards. Candace was also there for that. Uh, then, um, November seventh, Friday, uh, Grant County Bank, I was there for the check dedication that they gave to the chase vehicle. I swung by, I wasn't there all day, but swung by twice for the county sale. Uh, stuff on the Friday and then Veterans Day Parade on the eighth. All three of us were there for that and Luke. Uh, and then November eleventh, I went to Fort Ashby, uh, Veterans Day Ceremony. And that looks like that's it.
You forgot the judging.
Oh, yeah, we did judging. Pumpkin judging, what was that?
All three of you there?
Yes, yeah.
They were over there for like five guys.
All three of you were there for the Summit Awards and the judging of the pumpkins and then two of you were at the hospital.
I apologize. I do have one more thing under my report. I thought I sent this for the agenda, but perhaps I didn't. I definitely emailed this to all three of you. Um, probably not relations to the mall, so I have something. Did you all want to ease?
I did. I have, I started to.
Okay, because these, I do have to get this back to you, John's company. This is due, but I wanted to wait to meeting. I don't know if you guys had a chance to. I mean, it's something I. If, yeah, if you don't agree with them, I need to let them know.
My only concern was the courthouse valuation was like five and a half million dollars. Or replacement cost and there is no way we can go to court.
So I've had that conversation with them before.
Yeah, especially now.
Now, I never looked at it. Yeah, they've got, um, yeah, four point eight eight seven million, um, as the building replacement cash value on the courthouse. Total replacement including contents is five point five.
Including con.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
You mean so including contents?
Oh, yeah. Uh, that, uh, yeah.
Well, I can, if that's the only one you guys don't agree with, I can let them know that there's not agreement on that and at least have them send back what their, um.
Well, there's no way now since we put that new additional, you're gonna replace that thing.
No, I, no, I agree.
Originally can replace it for that.
No, I agree. Um, their stuff is always low and nine-one-one center, I, I felt like is way lower too. I fought with them on the contents of it a couple of years ago. They've got the building replacement value on, that's nine hundred and seventeen thousand on nine-one center. You, you could look at that building for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's, all the windows are bulletproof. It's got redundant furnace systems throughout. It's got a hundred KW generator. I, I mean, it, you couldn't touch that building for a hundred thousand now. But they did at least put the contents value up to almost half a million for me.
Well, you're getting new desks with that. That's over a hundred thousand.
I know, but they, they only had like a hundred thousand total in there before.
Yeah, that was.
Now, they did tell me though that WV, and I, and I can double check, um, that WV Corps still replaces. Doesn't, this isn't your cap. This is just what they charge you based on.
Oh, good.
Um, they do pay for the actual replacement, um, but I, I mean, it probably would.
Well, they probably need an answer now to move forward with it, so.
Don't get that in writing that day.
Yeah, probably not. Was this considered being on the agenda or do we need to wait?
Well, I usually sign off on these things. I, all the insurance stuff, I don't even usually.
Anyway, I was at the health department meeting. I had an update meeting on. And then I had, I was at United Force meeting, law office lives, nobody showed. Board of Education. I was at the awards dinner with the face you said. I was in Regen eight. I was at the veterans parade and then there's something else I did. I didn't write it down. I can't remember what it was. Nine-one-one judging, I was there, but.
The first item you said was the health department meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I was at, uh, day on the building, but not with, uh, Regen eight and with the health department. I was on that. And then United Force, nine-one-one judging, awards dinner. I was at Regen eight building. And I was at, uh, I was on the veterans parade, but I went to another meeting. I can't remember what it was. I didn't write it down. Too much going on.
Um, October thirtieth, I was gonna keep the ball rolling at the hospitals, which I'll, I'll add that we had, uh, got those scrap bags together, made, got those bags and got the, the county seal on it. They look really nice. Meant to grab one and have it here to show you guys. And, uh, Frankford Middle School had a coaster in it. These, one of these coasters, got one of them, got them to put in there. Uh, Patterson Creek Aviary had a little two and a half ounce thing of honey that they donated. And Lovely Mountain Coffee had two ounces of coffee, a little two ounce bag of coffee sample. There were coffee in the bag, uh, plus some brochures in there from Parks and Rec, CBB and, uh, Economic Development. Leanne came from the CBB, put the bags all together. And, uh, I had, uh, Eileen, Leanne, um, Cody and Cassandra was up there to help distribute the bags. I wasn't sure what we needed, so I kind of got all of them up there. Uh, that turned out really nice and Troy told me that, uh, a lot of people talked about how nice that was to give it out, digital grant bags and stuff. And, uh, people really enjoyed that or appreciated that, so.
Students and the public or?
That was, that was for the other school officials that came in from other counties. So it was, it was all the counties in eastern county, eastern hand handle, roughly a hundred schools. And we had, uh, earned some bags up there. We have some left over. And I think we're talking about maybe we're giving them out in mineral county days, hoping to get to the department. That, that turned out really nice, so I just wanted to mention that. Uh, so October thirty-first, pumpkin judging, November third, the satellite office at the sheriff.
Oh, that's where I did. Yeah, okay, I knew there was something.
November fourth, Carperdale Town Hall.
Do you have that one, Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Summit Awards. Oh, I judged, I was a science spirit judge at Frankford Middle School. That was interesting. Um, November the seventh, I met, met a lady. She had, he went through Kevin. Um, that's economic development. Kevin knew her. And she is from American Water Company. And I didn't realize it till it was late, but basically she was trying to get into. Who wants to look at a couple of our PSDs and make an offer? American Water basically buys up PSDs. Most of the time they're struggling or having issues. They buy them up, take them over and basically run them into a private entity. Um, but that's, I, I spent a little bit of time with her, talking to her, but that's basically what it was. Uh, November the tenth, the CBB meeting. And no, I don't have the parade on here, but you have me down for a parade. And so that's it for that week. Tonight, there is a meeting at Frankford PSD. Frankford wants to do a rate increase. Uh, they wanna do a twenty percent increase on the water, ten percent for sewer. Uh, basically the way it works out for current minimum for water and sewer, Frankford PSD is seventy-four dollars and forty-two cents. If these rate increases go through, the new minimum will be eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. And it's a ten dollars and eighty cents increase. There's a lot of miscommunication. People are adding the twenty and the ten and they think it's gonna be a thirty percent increase and it's not. It's just twenty percent for the water, ten percent for the sewer. And it comes out to about a fourteen point five percent increase, I guess, overall for the whole bill. Um, but, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty good jump. There is, like I said, there's having a hearing tonight for public comment at the PSD building at six thirty. I plan to be there. We, we were all invited.
I can't be there. I got.
I was planning to be there.
Uh, and they are settled for our next meeting. They need to be on the agenda for our meeting. Apologize to Jared's meeting, I can probably, probably make him appointment at some point, um, I'll say.
Five, six.
I'll recommend.
There's also a lot of miscommunication because some people understood it to me, mineral county as a whole. There were people in Cosar posting about it that this increase was happening. Like it's, it's definitely not, it's right there.
Well, the, uh, rarely, uh, there was a person that shared it to, to Cosar, Island Cosar. And put the post misleading that it was all mineral county.
Yeah, and people don't understand that it's all separate things, like.
Yeah, so that, that's, yeah, they got a lot of. But anyway, so yes.
That's, uh, the Lincoln Thanksgiving, so they got deer, deer hunters, you might want to assist.
I don't care. And another, I'm glad you mentioned that. And another thing, uh, I would like for you to have one next.
Up like the sixth o'clock, so.
French Republic Service, an appointment for next meeting. And we first said five o'clock, but then I thought, well, they're deer hunters. By the time they get out and then get here from the northern end, so maybe six o'clock might be better.
Could we, uh, put on there also, uh, Christmas, the twenty-third, could we change that day, put on there as? They said, that's not gonna work for me. I was told the other day. See, thing of it is, I've got more than one boss. I was told the other day, that's not gonna work for you, so.
It does stink. We have commission meetings, the week of Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah, I, I'd like to move that, have it on the next agenda, if you would.
Well, we can, they wanna take a date and move it to find you the sooner the better.
No, 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 it's the holiday, the next commission.
I'm good with moving it up, uh, uh, we want to go after the sixteenth. These guys, I know that's a lot between next meeting, but I wouldn't even care if we take it to the thirtieth. I wouldn't care.
The next commission meeting is the, this month is the twenty-fifth, though, right?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, but, but I was. I was informed that twenty-third will not work till we.
Or if we move it to the twenty-ninth, it was earlier.
I'm good with that. Yes, I'm twenty ninth would probably be good.
You have that opportunity that, that month.
Let's see, let me talk to Kenny, see if we got a person.
Yeah, so to put that meeting for six P M.
Okay, their appointment for six?
Yeah.
Their appointment for six. I just think it'll be harder for them to get them. I didn't count yet.
Oh. Does the um. I'm asking because I don't have understanding. Does the commission final say on how much PSCs? Can raise rating or is that West Virginia probably?
Apparently she's about.
No issue. That's a, that you got. I know, I know.
I know my eyes are crossed, so you both think.
I know, I was looking at him. I wasn't looking at you. I was looking at him.
Um, so my question was, PSC, does the commission make the final decision if they, they raise the uh, West Virginia? Public Service.
Public Service Commission will make a recommendation. And this is what they're looking at. They have to have certain funds, reserve funds, and they have to be uh, to a certain amount. Problem is they're not keeping those amounts up there for these reserve funds. I forget what the official name of those, remember what they are?
I don't, yeah, that's.
But, but basically it's a, like a rainy day or it's like a. So they have to keep these funds at a certain level based on the amount of. Transactions or the money they'll have longer. Their funds are not up where they need to be. So they're reusing all their money to pay their bills and, and move forward and they're not able to, to raise. These other funds that they need to be. So PSC will make a recommendation.
West Virginia.
Yeah, 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 probably, yeah. The West Virginia Public Service Commission will make a recommendation to them. My understanding is we do have ultimate control is to say what they can. They come to us and ask for the rates. We can turn it down. That is my understanding.
You have to change this.
I'll take what we can change.
Do we have to have a public hearing then too?
Yeah, that's, they set up the public hearing and that's what they're doing on the night.
Okay, but that's meeting on the, the next agenda.
The meeting on the next agenda will be them formally coming to us and asking for the rates. My understanding with that also is we have forty-five days for response. We can respond yea or nay. Or we can not respond at all and then can go ahead and implement it themselves.
Cause you were talking about their special funds, that actually affects them being able to apply for grants and stuff to your treatment.
That's what it does affect them with grants and stuff.
So I've, I've been trying to pick, see where it isn't code. I just didn't see where that, we had the. But if we don't respond, they can still, then they can.
They can do it. So Jason, anytime you have questions like that, Mike Land is the man to call. He's willing, he will, I mean, he will explain it all. I, I'm, here I am offering his services, but I'm sure it'll be a public hearing. You could ask him. Cause he still does project management work for him, but he knows all of the ins and outs of all of that.
Yes, it's kinda, I would been researching, knew this was coming up, but I just couldn't see where, anywhere we, we had a final say.
We don't have that. We don't have to, it's something.
Alright, so the next thing we need to do is approve the. Generations of.
Well, he brought up the fact that we might need to change the meeting the twenty-third.
Of December.
I don't think. I don't think. Unless they meet in December.
There you go. That's what I was gonna tell you. I don't, they don't do meetings in December.
I didn't think they did. I couldn't remember, but I didn't think they did. So if you want to do it the twenty-ninth, that would be great for the third.
Can we make that official or we have to wait till next meeting?
For the next meeting. Look at your calendars and know because.
I don't care if it's twenty ninth or thirtieth, I don't care. Uh, the thirtieth would be better for me.
Thirtieth would be?
Yeah, I have Monday night. You, I'm, I'm good. Oh, no, that's a morning. No, that's the meeting that I can't do.
Can't believe they don't see it for their payday meeting yet.
Okay, so we'll put that open next agenda. Okay, good deal. Anything else you got to report?
No, but alright.
We got anything more on that sort of thing?
That last fiscal year closed out last Wednesday. That was a major mid project, um, so. That would move on with the current fiscal year. So uh.
Is the financial statement ready yet?
No, that's what we had to close out before we could send anything for the financial. So now all that's been sent to the vent, they'll be sent to the vendor. She's been, do what she needs to do to prepare the financials.
When will she have that ready?
Probably several, probably not a month or so.
You're gonna do it in the fall.
Oh, no, it was due in September. That's why I've been stressing because it was due in September and that's why that's been my priority because. Things weren't getting done.
Alright, so that's it. We'll show you that.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we uh, approve the accounts payable.
I'll second that.
I, I agree. I make a motion, we accept the generation, approve the generation.
Second.
I agree. And I make a motion, we simply the states approve them.
I second that.
I agree.
Okay, do I hear a notion for us to adjourn if there's nothing else?
Make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
I'll prove that also.